Relax.
Good evening, everyone. I would like to call the Monday, October the 11th, 2021, Meeting of the University City City Council to order. Ms. Reese, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Klein. Councilmember Klein, thank you.
Here.
Councilmember McMahon.
Here.
Councilmember Hales.
Here.
Councilmember Cusick.
Here.
Councilmember Smothersen.
Here.
Mayor Crowe.
Here. Thank you very much. For the agenda, we have had an amendment made to the agenda, excuse me, to the agenda. So the public knows it was made during the first part of our session, and we simply moved item number J two off the consent agenda on to the city manager's report. With that, you will see that we have a proclamation for November the first, 2021, being extra mile day. Now we will move forward to the approval of the minutes. I would welcome a motion to approve the September 27th study session minutes of a loop of loop area safety. Motion made by Mr. Clay, is there a second? Second made by Mr. Cusick, is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. We have before you the September 27th regular session meetings. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. Hale, seconded by Mr. Cusick, is there a discuss- discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. I would like to appoint Richard Massey to the Community Vision 2040 Task Force, would welcome a second, and that will complete the task force. Mr. Smothersen, seconded, is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. For the record, Kathleen Simpson was sworn into the library board on October the 6th, and Todd Jacobs was sworn into the Board of Appeals on October the 7th. Moving on to citizen participation, we had two comments made by citizens that the city clerk provided to all of us. We thank you for those comments. They have been read and are a part of the record, and we appreciate your patience as we continue doing business by Zoom. You have one item on the consent agenda, which is consideration of the proposed 2022-2023 work plan. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion made by Mr. McMahon, seconded by Mr. Hales, is there a discussion? Mr. Smothersen.
Thank you, Mayor Crowe. City Manager Rose, I just have one comment and one wish that in reference to the work plan, that you would move up the reestablishment of the retention and recruitment program, and simply because I think it's more applicable right now to what's happening, and that there are businesses that we've lost, and we don't know who they are, where they're going, and why, and also in trying to maintain or keep some of those businesses that we're losing. So that's all. I said just a comment. I wish that I would hope that that could be moved up opposed to waiting till 2023. That's it.
Yeah, the comments. Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Rose.
Honorable Mayor, and councilmembers, there are two items that I would like to discuss with you prior to getting to the remainder of the city manager's report agenda. The first item has to do with the cost of relocating the council chambers to the Trinity Building. Many of you have seen the report that was conducted by Fox News' Elliot Davis, and as a part of the report, he indicates that the cost of relocating the council chambers is approximately $2 million. That could not be more false. When I spoke with Mr. Davis, I shared with him via telephone conversation that we had. At that time, I believe that the cost of relocating the council chambers to the Trinity Building would be less than $100,000. What I learned today was that the actual cost of relocating the council chambers to the Trinity Building is zero unless there is a desire to have new furniture once the council chambers are relocated. So I just want to share with you and with the public that there is no cost certainly for the relocation of the council chambers. The mayor and council will have the ability to have meetings in the council chambers should you choose to do so. But the real reason for recommending the relocation of the council chambers was to provide the ability for not just those that are disabled, let's say those that are just out of shape. If the elevator goes down, there is no way that a disabled individual that is not able to walk could traverse the stairs in order to see his government, his or her government in action. And so that was the, that was the real reason for the, for the recommendation. And I would say it's an old building, and unfortunately, there is oftentimes when the, when the elevator is, is not working. And so don't want to create a situation where we actually had at one time, the elevator was working, and then during the council meeting, it went down. So I just want to clarify that issue. The second issue I want to read in is...
Mr. Clay.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Crowe. City Manager Rose, I appreciate that explanation. In addition to allowing disabled citizens or residents to potentially be able to view the council proceedings, is there also not, as I understood, a security concern associated with the one point of ingress and egress with the chamber as it's currently configured?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Clay, that is a concern with, unfortunately, the environment that we find ourselves in today with active shootings happening. We want to provide not just you, but also the residents place you in the safest environment possible when conducting visits.
Ms. Klein.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask if there would be an official statement on social media about this, because I think this is really important information.
Yeah.
Access to.
I will be discussing this with the Assistant City Manager Gabby, and making sure that we do place the report that I received today and share it with you on our website as well as in social media platforms.
Thank you.
Mr. Hales.
I just wanted to clarify, having, having read the report, that the primary focus all along has been finding a permanent location that meets the needs for our courts. And as I read at the assessment, was that what's required of the courts are required of the courts, and that we could, not perhaps we, but, but a council could meet in those same, same chambers without any additional cost.
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Hales, that is correct, that there is, is truly no additional cost for the use of that multipurpose space.
Okay, thank you.
Honorable Mayor, I would like to read in a statement regarding the incident that occurred back actually in May of this year with an officer that stopped three pedestrians in the area of 8322 Del Crest and began to question them. Many of you have seen the body camera video at the stop, so you're aware that the pedestrians were detained for a total of seven minutes. On May the 11th, 2021, one of the residents filed a complaint against the officer that detained him and requested body camera footage of the incident. On May the 12th, 2021, an Internal Affairs Investigation of the incident took place, which resulted in what I believe to be appropriate corrective actions taken by my police, my chief of police. The stop that was made could have been handled much better. There is no denying that. But that does not mean that the police officer was grossly negligent in carrying out his duties. I know the police chief and his officers respect and pledge to protect the rights of every individual, and they are always striving to improve in how they protect and serve the public. That concludes my statements. Honorable Mayor and councilmembers, under City Manager's report, item K1, asks that you consider the purchase of a mobile shooting range trailer for the police department, and Chief Hampton is here to present the slide. Chief Hampton?
Yes, sir. How are we doing, Mr. Rose? Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the council. Can you hear me fine?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. The police department is in need of further training on firearms and annual firearms qualifications. So currently, we have to rent and lease out firearm range or ranges within other jurisdictions for that to occur. Most recently, we've, we've been, you know, we, of course, get secondary dates of, of uses of those firing ranges, and most of those dates occur on weekend evenings, weekend mornings, as well as holidays. So understanding that the annex is about to go through some renovation process, along with the fact that we have not been utilizing that firing range to the full capacity that it was initially to be utilized for. So Florsent Police Department contacted us with the fact that they were going to be selling their shooting range, or the correction, their shooting trailer, and that they were going to be putting it out for, for bids for other police departments. There are several other police departments that are, that are considering to try to purchase this particular equipment and, and utilize the resources of that. The trailer itself is a three-lane firing range capacity with up to 15 yards of, of usage, and the understanding that even the firing range that we had in our basement was, or when I say the basement, in our lower level of the annex was only a two-lane usage. So this is a very usable, very efficient, and a very effective tool to keep us above the training standards for not only certifications, but annual qualifications, and to make sure that we're, we're prepared and fully ready to, to utilize and meet any force that is upon us out in the field. The, I believe you all see the, the fiscal impact of the expenditures of $30,000, reference the general funds, general fund reserves, and understanding that of that amount, that includes the purchase of the trailer, the maintenance, the setup, and the upkeep of that trailer. So all of that is, is, is all inclusive of that, and that's the total estimation that we could come up with, with utilizing the analytics and the data given to us from Florsent Police Department. The only reason that they are, and this was, this was first purchased brand new back in 1995, like I said, is climate-controlled AC and heat. This can be, it has a filtration system, has a very extensive soundproof, as well as bulletproof and ballistic proof capabilities. We propose to house this in the, in a non-residential area of the Public Works Garage, in part, the Public Works Garage, which is a fenced-in yard, fenced-in facility, as well as the fact that there's no equipment that can be, that will be left inside of the trailer. So it's not the aspect that it would ever be compromised of any of the equipment that belonged to University City Police Department. I, I do believe that this is a worthwhile investment to help the, the younger generations that we have that are not as equipped with the firing range and the firing capabilities that they have to embark on. Besides what they learn in the police academy, it's a much more extensive training that we need to embark upon to keep everybody more than effective. That's all I have on that aspect, and I, and I can take any questions on that.
Are there questions of either the city manager or of the chief? Mr. McMahon?
Just real briefly, so just so I'm clear with, with the chief or the, through the city manager. So we're gonna, we'll have this, it'll offset the rental costs that we have to incur right now with all these other facilities, some as far away as Granite City, I thought, and that also will keep our officers, they won't have as much downtime traveling, so there's a big offset there. Is my understanding on that correct?
Yes, sir. Councilmember McMahon, that is correct. Just as recently as this past weekend, we were, or this past week and past weekend, we were in Granite City. We had to, we had to qualify for our AR-15 rifles, and we have to utilize different ranges on that aspect. Now, within this trailer, that won't be utilized for rifle training, but if, all the other trainings that we have to qualify on will be utilized in this. I had a, I had my master firearms instructor, Lieutenant Brian Eisenberg, do a lot of research and a lot of digging and vetting of the equipment, and, and we, we are confident that this is a good purchase. It's in good shape, and the only reason, like, and I meant to get to that, is the fact that Florsent has a substation now, which includes their indoor firing range, which is much extensive at this point.
So when, when...
Getting rid of that, yes.
When our indoor range is up and running, when the renovations are completed, would you contemplate continuing to use this to supplement that, or would we be able to put it back out on the market?
Is, and that's the options that we, that's options that you, city officials will have at that point. So it is, it is a, it is, that will be something that, that can be embarked upon once we get to that point. But as, as is right now, trying to wait for a couple years to see the completion and the first use of an indoor facility will set us back in training efforts.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Smothersen.
Thank you, Mayor Crowe. Chief Hampton, I just, a quick question for you. In one of your comments, you stated that this is a, a bid that we're doing. How sure are you of us getting the trailer if we are in competition with other municipalities? And then I have another quick question to ask. Because we have this trailer now in our location, would this be available to other municipalities to utilize in reference to their training?
Okay. The first, I'll answer the last question first. That is a possibility, that we do have collaborations in training. Often, we have utilized Overland, we have utilized Florsent, so we, we have, it's been a while since we've been within their trailers because we've been outdoors for that sake, but specifically during the weather, weather-challenging months, the indoor method is the most preferable. Now, the, excuse me, the, the first part of your question, Mr. Councilman Smothers, could you repeat that part of it?
Yes, sir. You mentioned that we, we have submitted a bid for this trailer, and that there are other municipalities that are in, that are actually after the trailer also. So how assured of you are we of getting this trailer?
I can tell you I'm not 100% sure, but I can tell you, we were the first department that they interacted with because they knew the, they knew of our interests, and they knew that we had been down from our, our annex firing range since 2016. So they, they did understand the limitations that we had on our training capabilities. So they, they did reach out to myself and Lieutenant Brian Eisenberg, and they advised us that, at that point, that it was going up for sale. That's only been a, that's only been a month or so, month or two now, and it's in the, in the works of being. So when I say bids, other departments are probably not, there's probably smaller departments that are, that are trying to obtain it for a lesser price than, and, and Florsent is pretty strict on the amount that they need to get for this.
And just to, just to go back to my previous question, if we do offer this to other municipalities, we will be charging for that, right? Is that correct?
There are, there are. I can tell you, for the trailers, we did not get charged. For the trailer use, we did not get charged, is more, is more of the maintenance and the safety mechanisms within that partnership and that collaborating of the network. For outdoor ranges, we do get charges. We do, we do receive those charges for the outdoor ranges.
I think Mr. Hales was next, I think.
Thank you. I just have a question following up on what Steve was talking about. For the, the anticipated need that, that you see the police department having this trailer, do you anticipate at the end of that need, if it's, let's just say, three years from now, to be conservative, that, that that will still be a viable, functioning trailer that, that would be something that could be sold to another department at that point?
Yes, yes, because, yes, yes, sir, yes, sir. I, I do, I do believe that is, is, is held up very well. The, the inside portions of it, I wish I could show you even further on the inside. You see, well, you do, you, you can see a couple photos of that, but those tarps, that ballistic material has to be, we say, reused or revamped to the, to the part, to the point of keeping the safety mechanisms in place and keeping the soundproof mechanisms in place. So that, that, this is something that, that is, is for prolonged use. This is not something that, that you have to get rid of in a 10-year timeframe or whatever the case is. It's more of about keeping up on the renovations for the trailer and keeping it in, in the certification and accreditation modes. So these, these trailers do get checked as well from the accreditation landscape of it.
Just as a point of reference for me, chief, what is a new one, what does a new one cost?
New one is, a new one is, is much more than this. It's, it's, it's approximately, it's probably double this. It would probably be at least double the amount that, and that's one reason we've never come with the, with that amount to the table, to the, to the mayor and to the council and to the city manager, reference that, because we, we knew that we were targeting a firing range within the building. It was just a matter of, at that point, leasing and going to the outdoor ranges, but specifically starting in November will be the last range date that will be facilitated outside, if, depending on the weather, but specifically, any department or any agency that has the capability of indoor ranges, then they convert to that at that point.
Other questions of the chief or the city manager? Ms. Reese, have I already gotten a motion for this or not? No. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. Smothersen, is there a second? Seconded by Ms. Klein. Is there a... Mr. Cusick, do you have another question, or is that a second? Okay, thank you. Those, those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Rose?
Honorable Mayor, councilmembers, under the City Manager's report, now item K2, it asks that you consider approval of participation in reimbursement program for project funding from Operations Maintenance and Construction Improvement, O M C I, taxing sub-districts. I believe we have Public Works Director Seon Halpleson on board to present the slide. Mr. Halpleson?
Mr. Rose, Mike will bring him in in just a second.
I apologize. Hello, good evening, Mr. Rose, Honorable Mayor Crowe, members of the council. The item for your approval consideration is the University City's Declaration of Intent to Participate in the Program MSD's Operations Maintenance and Construction Improvements Program for the calendar year 2022. Last year, 2021, was the first year that this program was established by MSD and used, at least just most recently, and we participated then, and we chose that, that time again, with your approval, the, the choice A. That means that 50% of the program funding that MSD collects from their sub-district that encompasses University City, there are two of those, can be used by University City based on applications that are approved by MSD for stormwater improvement purposes. Last year's revenue was about the same as this year, although this year we have about $20,000 more, and this funding is available per application, approved applications to utilize as a reimbursement program for University City's stormwater improvement projects. I, I have had the chance to discuss this item with the Stormwater Commission and inform that commission of the last year's, this, still the, this current year's activity, activity. There is one more quarter left in the current year for at least one more application. We have submitted one application already that has not been immediately approved by MSD, but MSD required additional information, and we are working on that. And I explained additionally to the Stormwater Commission, that is the intent of our department, and recommend to that to our city manager, Mr. Rose, to continue the program to allocate this funding in the new year, in 2022. That's why we recommend the choice A, once again, in the both sub-districts in University City, to use this funding in the new calendar year. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Are there questions from members of council? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve? Motion made by Mr. McMahon, seconded by Mr. Cusick. Is there a discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. We'll now move forward to new business. Resolution 2021-15, Third Ward Violation Task Force. Is there a member who would like to introduce? Remember, by Mr. Clay and seconded by Mr. Smothersen. Is there any discussion? I think we've had, well, is there a discussion? I know that to the, to the public, we have had a long discussion about the task force during our retreat, and so I just wanted to make sure that the public was aware of that as part of, of the conversation that we're having tonight. Are there questions or comments to be made by members of council regarding this item? Hearing none. Oh, Mr. Clay?
Oh, yes, Mayor Crowe, thank you. Just a question about, and City Manager Rose, you may address this in your remarks, just the timeline. We approve this. What are the next steps?
Honorable Mayor, Councilmember Clay, the next step will be the actual appointment of the, of the task force, and then we will schedule meetings with the, with the task force.
So what I'm understanding then is to all of you, the ball, after we pass this resolution tonight, the ball is back in your court to start making appointments. If Ms. Reese can help you in any way, I know that she will always be happy to do so, but the sooner we can, the task force will get to work more promptly if we are prompt in making our appointments. So any other questions or comments? Hearing none. Those in favor of Resolution 2021-15, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Any comments from council reports or business from my colleagues this evening? Hearing none. We've already had our citizen participation. Are there any closing comments by members of council? Hearing none. All I would say to everyone out there is, I think, as indicated to my colleagues earlier, first, to the members of the public who may be watching, we had our executive session at 5:30, just so you know that. And then secondly, I think, as many of you may know, today is National Coming Out Day, and I just, to all of the youth in the country who think we all recognize that people who are LGBTQ members tend to have a higher rate of suicide and dangers that can't, they can harm themselves due to a lot of peer pressure and otherwise. This is an important day for all of us who have traveled that path, and I would like to say to all the folks who were watching that if you ever need someone to talk to about such, about issues like this, I would be more than happy to be a resource for you. But otherwise, I hope that everyone enjoys National Coming Out Day. With that, a motion to approve? With that, a motion to approve, a motion to adjourn. Motion made by Mr. Hale, seconded by Mr. Clay, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the ayes have it, meeting adjourned, thank you very much.